So today it is.
Okay.
You're just being polite.
Move that we reconvene the council and seal the executive session minutes.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, folks, I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of September 2nd, 2014 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to sit down as a licensing board.
No move.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first on our docket here is special event permit. Open a hearing on an application for a special event permit filed by the Charahoe Athletic Association Incorporated for a fundraising event scheduled for Friday, September 26th at 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Saturday, September 27th from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, September 28th, 2014, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Dow Field Complex located at 1118 Main Street, Hope Valley, jointly sponsored by the Charahoe Athletic Association and Northeast Midways, 308 Hopkins Hill Road, Coventure Island. The applicant present, Mr. PC, I see him. Everything's in order, you said, the application?
Yeah.
Mr. Peace, you want to come and give us your annual spiel on the event and how it went last year, I guess?
Well, it went okay last year. This is our third year. To be honest with you, this is going to be the year. If we can't break it over the top this year, we're probably going to find something different. We're competing with six major events locally, from the Washington County Fair to the Bloom Festival to Stonington to Swamp Yankee Days. And I think the days of the small festival might be over, but we're trying to bring it back. But we're going to do a few things different this year. We're going to advertise more in the newspapers. I'm going to give $5 off coupons to all the kids at Charahoe so they can come in and get $5 off the wristband. So we're hoping that might...
Yeah, it's good.
It might work. Other than that, everything's going to stay the same. A little bit of entertainment, some games, some rides, pony rides, hay rides. Nah, it's about it. Hope keep our fingers crossed.
Any questions for Mr. Peace?
Yeah, I did. How did, how did everything go last year? Parking cars and getting things moving? It went smoother?
Not an issue at all. We have plenty of parking. We have probably 15 attendants and most of them are Hope Valley Fire Company. That's what, that's what they do for us. We had handicap parking behind the Grange. That Grange lot was handicapped only. Then we had behind Dow near the river. We have a big area there we use for our vendors and people that were going to be there through the whole day. Kept them off. And then we used the Little League parking lot in front of their building, the Little League parking lot near the power station. We used Woodmancy Insurance. We used the dam area. And then we also had the lot on Fairview, not Fairview Avenue, Bank Street that belongs to the cemetery. We mowed that and got that. But to be honest with you, of all that work, we haven't really used that lot. So we were really going to be concerned with that lot this year. But parking, not an issue, not an issue.
What did you end up doing with police? Or how many police do you?
Well, we had, we had, the first year, we, I overdid it. And we just basically spent more money than we needed to spend. There just wasn't enough people there. Because I have people patrolling the grounds. Last year, we had them there again, all three days. I plan on having them in there again this year with a security company.
How many police do you have?
Well, last year, we had, I think, on Friday, well, we did Thursday, let's see, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday last year. So for Thursday, I think we had two shifts. They're four-hour shifts. Friday, we had two shifts. Saturday, I think we had three shifts. And usually at the late, the late night hours, I like to have someone patrolling the grounds because you get a lot of kids that time. And I definitely, if something happens, I don't want to jump in the middle. That's why they're there. So between the Hopkin and police and the security company, we're going to make sure it's covered, so...
So you're doing it from both ways?
Yeah, we haven't, you know, this is the third year. Two years in a row, we've had no incidents at all, so...
That's great. That's great. Okay, there's one more question.
No, I just wish you well. You're, you're, every year, you're fine tuning things, so...
And that's a great idea, though, with the school, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's hard to get things passed out through the schools. So I got a mailing list from Charahoe Little League. There's like 400 emails. I got a mail list through Charahoe Girls Softball, and I'm going to hit up the Charahoe Cowboys. And we're going to send out a flyer telling everything about it, and then the coupon on the bottom. And then we're going to do half-page ads in the newspapers. So we're going to step up the advertising this year and see what hap... I'm hoping that next year, I'm hoping that I have a little bit of an issue with parking. Because then if I, we're successful, so. As of yet, we haven't had an issue with parking, so.
So good luck.
Thanks.
Scott, you have any questions?
No, I think Ashway Library usually puts up posters and things, so should ask them about that so some people in Ashway can participate, maybe some of the restaurants. But I salute you for what you do, and I have no further comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention, I guess, is if the council felt we should not charge the $100. I know you, that you indicated in here you weren't looking for a waiver of the $100 fee.
I never asked for it. I just...
Mr. President, I move that the request be granted and the fee be waived.
Motion made second. Any folks, any other discussion on that? You guys, questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll rebate the fee if you've already paid it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Okay.
At least you're $100 ahead already.
Move that we adjourn as a licensing board and reconvene as a council.
Second. Okay, motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next is the zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment hearing. Open a hearing on a petition for zoning ordinance amendment and zoning map amendment filed by Albert I. Hawkins Jr. of 20 Laurel Avenue, West Lea, Rhode Island, for property owned by Albert I. Hawkins Jr., located at 813 Main Street, Hope Valley, and identified as assessors, plaque 14, Lot 47, a residential special zone. The applicant proposes a zone change from residential special zone to manufacturing zone. The application is filed in accordance with Section 16 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Hopkinton as amended. Applicants present, I see Mr. Nakarado. Fees posted and everything's all swept in there, application. Okay, great. Mr. Nakarado, you have the floor.
Thank you. Evening. For the record, attorney Vincent Nakarado, 96 Franklin Street, Wesley, for the applicant Albert Hawkins. Mr. Hawkins has filed this petition for a zoning classification change through his engineering firm, Arm Engineering. As you stated, it is Lot 47 on assessors, plaque 14, presently zoned our residential special. And from what we can tell, that residential special results from, the special part of it results from, I believe, a rezoning of Canachet Cliffs. So this property, I believe, interpretation is correct, would, although zoned residential, the special part would allow multifamily dwellings on site. The property is, just to orient you, I have some photos. Just like to make these part of the record, this is a 4.1 acre site. There is a residential structure on site that was used for a residence. And the property was used in a non-conforming manner for many years. It was foreclosed upon. Mr. Hawkins purchased the property from foreclosing bank in February of this, of this year. Just to orient you again, this is a photo on the site, of the site taken in front of the site, looking towards Hope Valley. And then I show you these just to show the line of sight on the property. And also, that's a photo looking back towards Ashway. The structure is presently vandalized. It is boarded up and is not serving as a residence at this particular time. We're going to have some testimony from Mr. Hawkins in a minute. But just by way of prefacing his testimony, his intention in purchasing this property back in February was initially to rezone it to allow the use of the property by his son's business, which is presently located in Lincoln, Rhode Island, where he employs three people and plus himself. He is in the specialized business of concrete counters, which he will explain in, in detail to you as we, as we go on. But what I'd like to do is have Mr. Hawkins testify, and then we'll get into the testimony of his son at subsequent...
Aye.
If I could have Mr. Hawkins sworn.
Albert Hawkins, 20 Laurel Avenue, Wesley, Rhode Island.
Do you have your right hand, please? Your son, we swear that the testimony you're about to give is confidential, nothing about the truth.
I do.
Mr. Hawkins, you presently employed?
I'm presently employed Hawkins Wellen Pump for 47 years.
And that business you operated out of a site in Hopkinton for many years?
Yes, for many years. Well, we were here for probably 30 years. Right now, I'm in Wesley, Rhode Island.
Operating out of your, out of?
Out of my residence-type, non-conforming place, I should call it. Well, that's conformed, actually. Yes.
When you purchased this property in February of this year, can you tell the council what your intentions were with, for use of the property?
Well, the immediate intention was, basically, my son came to me. He was looking for a place where we could put a shop or, or business or whatever. There were two, it's kind of like a double-edged sword, because if this didn't work, we were going to bring him down here. We will build a house for him in that, in that section of the property. At that point in time, we decided that, you know, a place for his shop would be more applicable right there at Exit 2, because that's where trucks can get right off 95, on 95. They don't go through the town. There, it's a direct shot. It's not more than 100 yards off the end of the exit ramp to the driveway where it would be. And with all the neighboring lands being manufacturing, after he and I talked for a period of time, we decided, you know, this would, might be the right avenue to go first. That way, he could move his shop. And once he got his shop down here, then he can eventually, well, I'm getting older, so he could eventually actually take over my business as well and have them together, you know, in the same area. So that's basically what we're running for now. I think that he can, he's got a presentation for you if you have time to watch it or listen to him. And it's a little bit more that what people think of concrete work as. So if you don't mind, I'd have him come up and speak with you for a second and show you some of his wares and pictures of his shop at present, and pictures of some of the work that he does. He actually does, a lot of his work is done off-site. And so it isn't like it's a concentrated place. And all of the things that he builds, there's only, they're only one of a kind. What he makes is one of a kind. There's no mass production of anything. So if that's be, if that's okay with you, I will have him...
Is this for the countertops you're speaking on?
He makes countertops, fireplaces, outdoor fire surrounds, outdoor kitchens, anything you'd like. And he has some pictures, and he also has some, some of the samples of his wares. And if you'd like to take a look at those, I...
Why not?
I'll have him come up, okay?
One thing, your, your own well-drilling business, your intention eventually would be perhaps to move that, that business on this site as well?
His intention will probably be to move it there because I'm getting older. And I'm not going to move a lot more, you know. But no, he will be probably taking over my business eventually as maybe micromanaging it or whatever, because I'm getting up there in age and I'm not going to be able to do it. And so physically or whatever else. But that's why we figured it would, it was kind of, brings everything together for us as a cluster. It brings, you know, brings him back down here, so to speak. So...
Ike, what's, I think you heard me explain to the council the present condition of the premises?
Oh, the premises up, that's up there now has been completely gutted. They've taken all the copper tubing, the wiring, everything. The inside is a mess. But it's just, it's a tear-down, definitely with us. You know, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, even if we were to do anything, that we're going to be residential or whatever, we would definitely tear that down anyway, because it's just nothing for us to work with. And it's an ISO, and it's too close to the road. And that's what we, you know, that's what our intentions are.
And your, before you purchased that property, it was used in some kind of non-conforming status or?
Yeah, Roland Bowley, I don't know, you, some of your people may be familiar with Roland Bowley. He used to own the property. And he, he was a junker. He did junk. And it was...
It's in the back.
In the back. And over across 95 on the other side. The EPA has all been cleared on this. The land is all been, I've got all the paperwork for it, so there's no, nothing to worry about as far as that's concerned.
That was cleaned up simultaneously with the, with your purchase of the property?
No, that was cleaned up before because Roland got a reverse mortgage on his house. And before he could get the reverse mortgage, they made him take care of the EPA. And that's when that was done. And I think it was E9 or something. I've got, it's in the paperwork. If I could go back through if you need it. So...
So Mr. Nakarado, the, the non-conforming use that you referred to was as used as a place for junk? Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if the town at that time even went after him as far as using it as non-conforming, because, you know, we, there's a lot of laws, but we got, we don't enforce them, unfortunately. You know, I mean, that's, you know. Okay. Any other questions for me that anyone would have?
David, do you have a question?
Couple, couple of questions. So your intention is not to use the building that there's not, there is there now. That's going to, that's going to go. And where on the property, because I believe four and a half acres, is that correct?
Four, 4.13.
4.13. How far back from the road are you going to establish this, this building? It's not going, is it going to be right on the road or?
No, no, no. It's going to be back from the road. We have drawings...
Between the road and the building?
We have drawings that Mr. Rhodes had prepared. But the way the laws are written, it's almost like we're putting, we put the horse before the cart, because you have to do all of this before you can apply for the zoning change, not knowing if you're going to get the zoning change. So, but we went through, we went through it, and we did the steps that we were supposed to do. We've, we've protested the land. We've done everything else. It's all done. Basically putting, as I say, I think the horse before the cart, because we don't know if you're going, you know, we can get it approved or not. But that being said, it's, there's more than enough land there, and we have, we will be putting the, the building back.
So it'd be a buffer between the road and the building?
Right, exactly. And, you know, and we, we intend to, my son wants to make this really look good, because this is, his business is high-end business. And he does a lot of work. Block Island, Fisher's Island, you know, all over the place. Boston and whatnot. A lot of his work is, you know, makes part of it in the shop, and I'm sure he can explain it to you better. Makes part of it in the shop, and then it goes out to the road. It goes on the road and goes out, and it's installed in people's houses or whatever. Everything he makes is one-of-a-kind items. So they, and the people really like that, because other people can't have something that looks like what they own.
Would you refer to him as a mason? Would that be a?
No, that's not mason. No, no. This is actually, he's, it's a craft that has been, well, started in California, and it's actually worked its way this way. He actually used to teach classes to people around the United States in regards to it. Now he's got his own business going, but it's, it's, as a craft, I say, you know, he, there'd be tables like the size of your table here, and this would all be concrete. You know, I mean, and it would come in on a truck, on his truck, and everything is built upside down and backwards.
Let me ask you one more question. As you know, there's, there's residencies not too far away from this site.
Correct.
Tell me, tell me about any type of pollution that we're going to have. I mean, I mean, noise pollution, air pollution, light pollution. I imagine it wouldn't be light pollution, you know, too many bright lights. But do you foresee this, this process being a noisy process?
We're trying to, as, as you say that, we're, we're trying to keep everything toward the Route 3 side of the property. Back far enough, as you said, though, so aesthetically it looks nice. But back far enough, so, but not infringing back towards Canachet Cliffs or the other buildings.
Right, right.
So...
You have to worry about things like that.
Yes.
If you should put any kind of industrial building near residencies, there's always that threat of noise, air, you know, or light pollution.
Well, the more we can keep up, the better off it is for us anyway. We don't want to cut any more trees than we have to on the back. And, you know, I mean, which would make it, it actually ensures the privacy of Canachet Cliffs as well.
Sure.
You know. And I do work for Canachet Cliffs, so I don't want to make Canachet Cliffs mad at me either. You know what I'm saying? I do all their pump work.
You've done well with me.
They do well with me.
Ms. Fiverr?
I know you're going to be, what you said in this is that you'll be putting two 50-by-100-foot buildings on it. And I'm assuming you are moving it toward the back. But I'm not so much worried about Canachet Cliffs as I'm worried about Cardinal Lane, because Cardinal Lane is the, really, the nearest neighbor. And I do know some of the cement work, and you're right, it is a craft.
Mm-hmm.
And it is one of a kind. Are, is all of the construction going to be inside the shed so that all the noise and the air and the cement dust stays in the shed? And there won't be anything done outside? Or is that something your son should explain?
My son's going to explain that. I can tell you right now, all the work is done inside. But he can explain it much better. He has the pictures for you to show you his shop now, and how many employees he's got and everything else, and he can let you know that. And I think he can put you, put a much better presentation together than I can.
Yeah, my concern is you're very close to Cardinal. You're very close to Cardinal Lane, which has families with children.
I understand that, yeah. But that's, most of Cardinal Lane area down in there is not really where we would be, want to build. And, and basically because we've dug some holes down there, and that is not like, it's, it's not a good area for what we would want to do. The second building is basically, we put that there just so that nobody gets surprised. You know, I mean, we put it in there now so that it's not something, obviously we can't afford that right now. It would be years down the line. But we wanted to make sure that we were covering ourselves as far as what we could do there, and as far as, you know, putting another building in there if we so desired at that time.
Would they be parallel to the road or perpendicular to the road?
They'd be parallel to the road. You know. But we could, that, and that can all be adjusted. You know, I mean, we, we are willing to work with anybody as far as, you know, the aesthetics of the building, as far as what they want it to look like. You know, I mean, that's not a problem with us. It's just getting the problem, the buildings up and whatnot.
Probably just have a...
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
Actually, I'd like to hear from his son.
Okay, no, David. For Mr. Hawkins, thank you.
I'm inclined to support this, and I think what we have to take into account is the fact that interesting area there between mixed business and homes. And from all indications, this would certainly be an improvement to that site at the present time. I think that's rather obvious. The only, the only question I have is, I went through the checklist, and I know 12 of them were checked, and, and maybe they didn't need to be, but existing and proposed parking areas and walkways, and I assume that should be done. And the other one is topographic data as may be taken from U.S. Geological Survey, but it's may be, may be taken, so I assume that that doesn't have to be done. But can you comment on that?
We have that all done.
Oh, you, that's right. I think I saw that.
That is all done. Mr. Rhodes has that done? We presented that to the planning board the other night. And they all had copies. I don't know whether you people were supposed to have copies or not.
In our packet, the one-end packet, July 17th, 2014, those two lines aren't checked off. That's all I, you know, that's why I brought up. I think I did see it where it was.
One thing we are, are asking for here, and I don't know, should I get into this before my son? No. Okay, all right. Well, we'll wait for that. All right. I think that's his presentation you'll be impressed with, and I think you should, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for you. I'll wait for your son's presentation.
Okay, good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Justin, here.
I think part of your package has a, should have a zoning map in it. Is that this map?
Yes, we have.
Yes, we have.
And you can, just from looking at that map, you can see directly across the street is a swath of manufacturing property. To the east is residential special, is, and also to the north, that's Canachet Cliffs. A portion of Cardinal, where the multifamily is, is actually zone commercial special. Interesting mix of zoning. As you go up towards the hill going into the valley, Phil Oakley's garage there is zone commercial as well. I could have Justin sworn.
Do you have your right hand, please? Your son, we swear that the testimony you're about to give is confidential, nothing about the truth.
I do.
For the record, your name and address?
My name is Justin Hawkins, and currently I reside at 78 Patuxent Avenue in Cranston.
And what is your occupation, Justin?
We manufacture concrete products, things, anything you can, you can imagine. But the most part is, is the concrete countertops. We do outdoor kitchens. We do fireplace surrounds, sinks, vanities. But it's not the, it's not the traditional concrete that you think of. I've got a couple of examples of our work here, and I think you'll see, it's just not what you think of when you think of concrete. Currently, I'm, I have a studio up in Lincoln, Rhode Island. It's, we got about a 5,000-square-foot studio. And we operate everything inside because we don't, we don't have any outdoor spare space. We rent in a mill complex. We don't have any, aside from our trucks, we don't have any, anything outside that we can really store anything at or anything like that. We only have a couple of trucks. The biggest truck I have is a box truck that's about, you know, the box is about 14 feet long. But other than that, you know, we're, we're a pretty small business. And we take, we don't take on a lot of work. We take on what we can handle. I like to think of what we do as a craft, and we, we don't like to rush things. And I've been told that my whole life by my parents, so. But we don't like to rush what we do. You know, it takes time. What we do, it takes time. It's a craft, and it's, it's not something that is a, a big manufactured product. I wasn't present at the planning board meeting, and I understand there was some, some issues coming up because it was concrete work. And I, I'd like to address those now as to what we do. If you, you want to see some samples that we have. They're a little heavy because they are concrete, so. But this is, this is a, an example of some of the stuff that we do. We're kind of, we're more in the design business than we are in the concrete business. Essentially, what we do is we, we put all these ingredients together, and we're much like, like bakers, essentially. You know, all the stuff that goes into our mix, you know, we can design it right down to the color of the stone that's in the mix. You know, we put glass in it and stuff like that. This isn't your typical concrete. I definitely want to alleviate the fears that, that this wasn't going to be some big ready-mix plant, big old, near-looking thing that, that we do. What we do is, is very contained, and we spend a lot of time with our clients, basically, you know, going through what they want out of their kitchens. You know, this is an example of, of a kitchen that we did for somebody that was down in, yeah, it's a little heavy.
These are countertops?
These are countertops, yeah.
Is that too? That's a countertop?
That is a countertop, yeah. It's more like a landscape of almost what we did.
You can pick them up.
Yes, it's, it's, it's all ingo cast, but you can see the coloration we get through different dyes and stuff like that.
Wow.
People ask us about, like, you know, the ways that we do, is, we don't, we're not like a big concrete company, so we don't, we don't measure what we do in cubic yards. We, we measure in cubic feet. We're making very small batches of concrete. And when we dump, when we're done with the washout, we actually have a system right now where we actually dump the, you know, dump our washout into a settling bucket. The settling bucket all settles to the bottom, and then we can, we can pour up more at that point in time. in time. So we contain the waste, and then that waste gets just put into the trash like with our regular waste. But we don't put all that stuff right away back into the atmosphere or anything like that.
Do you deal with any toxic chemicals?
Um, not really.
If you do, what level of toxicity? There we go.
We've got, you know, like, we follow the MSDS guidelines, so we've got, in our shop, I've got all the MSDS books and everything like that that we use. But, you know, we do work with some acids, like uratic acid, like a lot of Masons do and stuff like that, but in such a small amount. A lot of times we use an acid, we use it to clean concrete, not to do anything to, you know, to really, it's gonna be integral in your product. But, yeah, we use pigments as well. A lot of the pigments we use are organic pigments, like iron oxides and oxides in that respect, where it's just, they're natural, they're derived from those products and stuff like that.
The reason why I ask you that is in cases of spill, because we're on wells. And, you know, we really don't want to get into a situation where uratic acid, for example, which I know about, takes the chrome off anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, Russell. It's really dangerous stuff. Nasty stuff.
Yeah. Now, we've got a, we've got a hazardous container in our shop. And in our shop, I'll show you the.
Where is your shop, did you say?
We're up in Lincoln. We're on the, we're pretty much in Central Falls, but they say it's Lincoln. But it's an old, it's an old building that we work out of up there. One of the main reasons why we want to move down here, number one, is to be close to my family, my family lives down here. And I originally started down in West River, right on Mall Street, and then we moved up to, up to, when I moved back here, it was 2005. And then when I, when we moved back here, and all of a sudden the housing market went down, and they, the economy went down, so we had to kind of scrap the work where we could get it. We were getting work from Boston, Providence area, so we moved the shop up that direction. And it's been a good move for us. But the problem that we have right now is that the things that we do are very climate sensitive. So like when we're casting concrete, our curing temperatures and stuff like that are something that we'd like to be able to control a little bit more. With the building that we're in right now, it's an old building, it's brick and cinder block, and it's, I can just literally watch the heat fly out the window in the wintertime. And we've got a big gas heater up top, and it just basically goes right out the window. What we're looking to do is we want to put in a radiant heat concrete floor for the incandescent insulation core envelope around it, so we can control those temperatures a little bit more, and we're not gonna be working in the freezing cold in the winter and extreme heat in the summertime.
It helps secure the cement.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. What we've been dealing with it by locking off areas of our shop, and having areas that are heated more than other areas, and areas that are, you know, that we can survive in and do the woodwork in in the cold weather. And it's been working for us, but it's just, it's really difficult. The other thing, too, is that, you know, we're operating by the square feet now, but the space is just so cut up poorly. It's got beams and columns and everything like that. I can show you some pictures of what we've got. The first few pictures in there, so you guys can pass them out. I didn't really know how things were gonna go here. I have more of a presentation here, too, but I kind of pared it down a little bit.
It's a busy shop.
So what we do is, this is our little showroom that's off the side of our shop. That's the first interview you'll see, the showroom that's off the side of the shop. The second interview you'll see is where we build the forms. That's the area that we can actually keep a little bit cooler, and it doesn't matter, it's just woodwork that we're doing. Most of the stuff we do is woodwork. It's not really concrete. Our concrete's kind of the secondary part of it. We spend most of our time building the molds, building the forms that are really intricate and different like this one here, you know.
Is your building going to be the first one built?
It is, yeah. Yeah. I know my intention is to try to get down here as quick as possible. I've got a dollar now, and, you know, we're just walking closer. She's three years old.
Well, I want you to know that your father is well-respected in town. He's done a lot of work for many of us with Wells over all the years, and he just practically knows everybody. But it is exciting for council members to see children, people who've done business in town for years, be able to do something like what you're gonna do. You're gonna, you're gonna do something in our town, in your town, and be close to your own family, and you live here, I mean, you really, you're gonna care about your business. And obviously, you take pride in what you do no matter where you are, but to have you back home, and I'm sure it's special to all your family.
And I'm very, I'm very kind of inspired by my father growing up, because he's had all the different businesses, he was a governor, and I had a Jakesville machine over West Valley. I've worked at most of them.
You're starting or asking for a manufacturing, although it's really almost light industrial, because you're actually working as an artisan, as a craftsman. It's not straight-line manufacturing, you know, like a cement plant would be. So I think it's a wonderful addition to the arts community, actually, in Hopkinton.
I agree.
Because I have seen these, I've had clients do floors like that, you know, as well as the countertops. I mean, amazing spaces. So it sounds like you would be not a wonderful addition on any number of levels, but I'm sure for the art community, it would be fascinating as well, because it's a real industrial.
The hop art.
Yeah, very much so.
You mentioned your client.
I was a lighting designer.
Oh, yeah.
So they were very high-end homes, and any number of them used the polished cement.
Oh, yeah.
And they were stunning, just stunning pieces.
Well, the, yeah, another concern that I come up with the aesthetic of the building, and, you know, we work with a lot of architects and designers and stuff like that, and there are a lot of friends up in the province, and down here as well. And doing what we do is very important to our clientele, to our business as well, to make sure the place is good and fine. You know, we're not looking to have a place that's, you know, it's like a junkyard area, you know. I can't have clients coming in.
No.
Coming in from New York and blocking out.
Right. Could you tell me what the building's gonna be constructed with? Is it gonna be cinder block? Is it gonna be sheet metal?
Uh, well, we're costing it out. You know, we want to build the best building we can with as much as we have. You know, we're not loaded by agents, but I'm saying, so we're looking to spend a little bit of money to make sure the building is properly constructed. And we've looked into, you know, being in concrete, I was looking into insulated concrete forms originally, and doing it that way. The problem is the roofing system and putting the roofing system together with that. Most likely, it's gonna be a steel-built construction with definite additions to it as well, you know, just in terms of the aesthetic. The main thing that, for me, is making sure it's energy efficient. That's the main benefit that we want to do. We want a greater space where we have radiant heat and the incandescent or equivalent insulation, I think, but equivalent, because we have pulled out the insulated concrete form yet. But something like that, where it's totally, our value's really high, I think we can do some really good work out there.
I have just a quick question on the second part of the project. I guess it'd be like a PVC, would you have like, I think it's gonna be a retail sales of, was it PVC?
That was, I'm not really familiar with what that part of that, I don't know, the PVC type guy.
I had, I had digested that in there. I had a gentleman come down from up in Massachusetts and talk to me about putting a bill, you know, about putting a shop in there. And that's the only reason. I was just looking for something else, you know, that was like it, like product that would go in there. And nothing has been even said from that one day that I talked to him. I just put it in there, in the paperwork when I put it down.
The only reason why I ask, it really doesn't matter, but again, my reason for asking was, you know, there's a pipe company, a PVC pipe company on Main Street.
Yeah.
Not too far from that proposed location. I wasn't sure if you guys would be competitors or, you know, accentuate each other's businesses in terms of being, you know, customers, suppliers, or whatnot, so.
No, the gentleman I talked to was aware of the PVC place down the street. He was, this gentleman was selling, he's selling actually septic pieces and pumps for diverters, for the new type septic systems. And that's why he was looking to get down in this area. Nothing that we've done, I haven't even talked to him since the day that he stopped in. As I say, we had to fill the form out and to put something on the form at that point in time is basically what we did. That's why that's there.
Do you know if it would have been a competitor with Pipe Pro or not?
No, would not have been a competitor of Pipe Pro. Not from what, you know, because he knew Pipe Pro was right there, you know.
Okay.
Any questions?
Terry said to me that he, this gentleman that I had talked to was looking for retail, and I guess Pipe Pro does only wholesale, as far as what they do for up there. But that's not what we're looking to get. You know, we're looking to get started with what we have here for his project, is what it boils down to.
You might expand. You might have your first 50 by 100, and he may need the other 50 by 100.
May not even need anyone else, right? Did you show him the pictures?
I did, yeah. I kind of behind it all.
Oh, you did?
I didn't know, I had a lot more to do. I had a paragraph of it.
But it's really beautiful work.
Thank you.
And hopefully, it would appreciate in value, but it would also grow. And since you're an artisan, if you have two buildings like that, you could bring in another artisan, too. You know, something that complements the cement work.
Well, then, that's one of the things that we had discussed as well, you know, because we do contract out a lot of work to the cabinet guys and steelworkers and steelworkers and stuff like that. And, you know, and I think that would be a nice addition for the building as well.
About employees, Justin, how many employees do you have and envision at this site?
Do you have to speak up, Mr. Nakarata?
Nope, sorry. I asked about number of employees he has and how he would envision initially how many employees.
Currently, I have three guys that work with us and myself, and I probably, I probably keep it kind of small, to be honest with you. I've had more working for me before, and when I first went into the business, my father always told me to keep it small. And I had these grand ideas of having this huge enterprise, and quickly found out that it was way better to keep it small. So, you know, at the most, I probably have, you know, five guys that I can really trust and can really do the work that we like to do, the type of work that we want to do.
And that's the extent of the cement products that you would be producing? You wouldn't be manufacturing septic systems or anything like that?
No, definitely. No interest whatsoever.
How does this compare per square foot to manufactured stone and granite? I'm just curious.
It's interesting, because what we do is more of a function of labor versus function of material costs. So our product is basically done by labor. So when I work with a client and I say, all right, well, it's gonna be, you know, we start out at EDL, the square foot, and then we go up from there. But it really just depends upon what you're looking for, because within that square foot of product, like this one here, for example, the one with the, with the blue, and, you know, we've got a lot of little things that we've done to this one. You know, we've got the staining along here, and then we ground the surface here, and then we did a little bit of detailing here. You know, so this square foot is worth more than a square foot that's just plain, you know. That's one of the products that would be like in this area here, you know. You know, something like this would be lower, and something like this would be much higher. But a lot of times, we almost work time and materials, you know, when we start working with clients that really want something different, you know. We've been asked to create some pretty unique things, and most of the time, we deliver.
Because stone is stone. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
You can't really monkey around with it, but with this, this idea, you can.
Yeah, it's not something for everybody. I mean, it's got its drawbacks, like anything, but it's creative, you know. We can add function to a kitchen versus just being a static surface. You know, a lot of the things that we make are almost like Alaskan, you know. That's the thing that we really like to do with it. It's a fun medium to work with, and I can tell you straight up, it's can be extremely frustrating. You know, and when I was talking to you about the temperature changes and such, you know, in the wintertime, the color's different than it is in the summertime. And if you're showing a client a sample that was made in the winter, and you make it in the summertime, it's lighter because of that. And, you know, it's plain. So it's a lot of, there's a lot of things that can take, that can play a role with you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions, Mr. Hawkins?
Couple of little things, but tell me about the signage that you plan for the business? I'm sure you've been asked this before about zoning board or planning board, but tell me about it. Big sign, small sign, on the building?
I definitely want it to be recognizable. You know, and probably a freestanding structure than the building itself. Maybe something a little closer to the road, to be honest with you. I mean, I'd like to do something that's kind of freestanding. Something on the side of the building is nice, but it's easy to drive by. And a lot of times, if I've got clients coming to Boston or something like that, I want to be able to make sure they can see it.
It's gonna be a lit sign?
I haven't really got that.
Sorry. No, I just, what I'm worried about is setting up another Richmond where we got one lit sign after another.
Oh, yeah.
And a hodgepodge, you know, because if we start zoning, if we do get businesses to move into exit two, I really don't want to see a bunch of, you know, a bunch of backlit signs all over the place.
Well, we've got the sign ordinance.
Yeah, we do. We do, that's right. I just wonder which way you've been planning.
To be honest with you, we probably, we probably can have something on concrete and light it, you know, to the point of what we need to.
Sure.
But our showroom right now is only open by appointment.
What is the name of your business?
It's Livingstone Concrete Studio.
Livingstone Concrete Studios.
We've got a website, too, if you want to check it out. Livingstoneconcrete.com. And it shows a lot of nice examples of what we do.
Okay.
Good.
Any further questions, comments, folks?
I have none.
I have none. Barbara, you have something? David? Okay.
I have, excuse me, I've got Mr. Rhodes here from Arm Engineering. If you'd like to see what a concept plan looks like. I mean, it's in the, it's nothing in concrete. No pun intended, believe me. But he's here to answer any questions you might have from an engineering standpoint, but I really, I know it's not, it's not really pertinent to the what's before you tonight, but, yeah, okay.
No, we're all set.
Okay.
Rick.
That concludes our presentation. I had also a real estate expert intending to testify, but unfortunately, Mr. Lenan is ill, so he couldn't make it tonight. But I think you can see from the zoning map that the mixed bag of zoning that's in this area and how this property has been used, we think that this change from residential special to manufacturing would be a boon to the area. Also, we also realize that because the future land use map of the comprehensive plan indicates this property as residential, that that would have to be changed, too. So anything that you did this evening, and by way of approval, would be conditional upon us filing that, which we're ready to file as well on a change to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Then a solicitor, Pat, would like to talk to you, so I'm gonna take just a two-minute recess. You guys can chat quick, quick.
Sure.
And Pat will talk to you briefly, and then we'll resume in a couple of minutes.
You weren't coming in? That was it?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick.
Wasn't cheap, you know, but it's good.
Okay. Counsel, any more discussion on the matter with Mr. Hawkins and 813 Main Street?
Are we gonna take public comment?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah. I'm working on counsel discussion at this point.
Why don't we just make sure that Mr. Nakarata's not looking at this?
Okay. Mr. Nakarata, are you done with your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion for the quiet? Okay. Any public comment out there? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
Well, we need to get it on the camera.
On the record. State your name and your address, all that good stuff.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Lorden. Um, I live on fifty, at 57 Hopkinton Hill Road, so we're...
Which one?
57 Hopkinton Hill Road, which is right off Comden Lane, so very close. And Lorden, L-O-R-D-E-N. Um, I just had a couple of questions. It sounds like a great business, and I'm all for bringing in new business, but of course, living that close, I also have concerns, it being a residential area with that being turned into manufacturing. I think one thing you already answered was the hours of operation. It sounds like it's not, uh, anything at night.
No, no.
So, the noises are a concern for me, the lights, um, trucks in and out, doesn't, that would be another concern?
The only, the only, uh, do you mind if I...
Come on up with her.
I don't know who I should, who I should be talking to.
No, it's good.
No, just stay there. Keep them just a quick.
The, uh, the only time trucks will be coming in is to deliver supplies or anything like that. Sometimes we get deliveries of, of, you know, melamine or whatever, casting on, you know, casting services or, or the concrete products, stone, that type of thing. But, uh, it's, it's, you know, once we get a delivery, like I was saying before, we, we do small batches, so that happens, you know? I get a delivery of stone, like once every two months, you know, that, that goes through the, the two months, and then we get another delivery, so, so it's not that, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be...
Could you give us an idea of how many trucks a week might be coming through?
Two.
Okay.
What about time?
What's that?
Time?
You know, it's, it's always, it's always within business hours.
It's just that...
Because a lot of times, if I'm, if I'm not there, my guys have to receive it, so, so it's always between, you know, yeah.
What are the hours of operation?
Uh, well, we operate kind of, uh, all over the place, but, you know, we, we're generally from, from seven to about four o'clock, you know?
So, nothing in the evening, nothing in the evening, and starting at seven, it would be quiet, and it's, it's quiet when you start at seven o'clock in the morning, you don't suddenly put out huge machinery?
Oh, yeah. No, well, everything's done inside, too. So, it's not, if we don't, we don't mix stuff outside or anything like that.
And then four o'clock pretty much finishes it, unless you have to work till six or something?
Yeah.
Because I know you're an artisan.
Yeah, we have a deadline or something like that, we have to work a little later to, to do that, but...
But otherwise, it's not like night hours?
No, it's not going to be any crazy, no, no. We don't, we're not going to turn a third shift.
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing is, is just the noise factor with the neighborhood. And then I just also wanted to mention that I hope, wish you all the best, and I hope your company, you know, your business lasts, but if his business didn't last, we've already made the change to a manufacturing zoning. So, then what are the, you know, his might be a small mom and pop business that's going to be well-controlled or contained, but if his business didn't last, what would be the parameters on a new business coming in if it's already manufacturing zoned? And then my other concern or question was about his dad's business. If that also moved in, that's quite different from what he's talking about, you do. So, what kind of effect is that going to have on the property or the business or...
Well, basically, what we do is, all my work is on the road. People call, they don't have water. Basically, my shop is storage, a little bit of welding, whatever else that we do in there. But that's about the extent of it, you know? It's not something where I don't have people coming in off the street to buy. Everything we do is on the road. Phone calls, people call, we go, and that's the way it's run for the last 46 years, so, you know, I don't see it proceeding, changing that. So, that would be one where there's been like two trucks, and they'd be in and out maybe two or three times a day. That being said, 95 is, the exit ramp is only like 500 yards from the driveway for the entrance, so you, you won't have trucks going down Route Three or through, through Hope Valley. 99% of the time, the truck's just going to get off of Route 95, which is why this place is ideal for something like we're doing. You just get off 95, and then you back up to 95, and now we're on the road.
We can put codicils on it, too.
I'm sorry?
We can put codicils on it, like if you sell the business, we need to make sure that they have, made sure that outdoor storage is not allowed, or there are other things the planning board can do as well. Because you're right, it does need codicils attached to it. In case you sell it and it has to go to someone else who is not as pleasant, a codicil is...
A condition.
A condition.
That being said, the, the only problem I have with conditions is if we were to, were to go borrow money against the building itself or the land, the bank, if no respectable bank is going to say, yes, well, we'll let you have some money. Because if the restrictions are there, then they realize that they're not going to be able to sell. The bank, if something did go belly up or whatever, the bank can't sell the property at that point in time.
Right, but we don't want to...
So, the bank's not going to let you have money against it.
Right, but we don't want to change it to manufacturing and then have a cement mixer in there with outdoor storage and noise and...
Oh, no, I understand.
Because once we, once we approve manufacturing, lots of things are open that we may not appreciate.
Yeah.
So, she's right, we need to take a look at it to make sure that if we change it, that we are servicing the residential people nearby. You certainly seem like you are. I don't see any problem with it at all. And I don't think the codicils would be something that would be detrimental. I mean, putting up buffers is certainly something you would do as well as someone else.
Oh, yeah.
But it is something that she's right to address.
And like, I have, his business sounds like a nice business, and that's all, it's the things that could happen if that business...
We appreciate your input, I understand that, yes.
Yeah, no, I think it sounds really, I just wanted to bring up my concern.
That's not a problem. Thank you very much.
So, can you maybe just touch upon, thanks, Mary. Just touch upon the noise factor being, you know, you're going to be basically doing this curing of concrete inside the building, it's not going to be a lot of spillover outside of this contained, contained building.
No, no. No, it's, it's, yeah, the way we operate now, everything's done inside, so it's, uh, we're actually going to be doing pretty much the same thing. The only thing, if I can see anything, being done outside is just, you know, we're, we're going to keep our, our trucks and stuff like that outside, and sometimes we'll, we'll load stuff into the trucks outside. You know, there's a bigger truck, so we'll bring the stuff out and load it in the truck out there.
That's reasonable.
But I guess one of the issues I'm hearing from Mrs. Lorden is whether or not the noise is going to be contained within the space. In other words, I understand you doing everything inside, but does the noise remain contained within the space as well? Does any of it escape outside the noise?
Except, well, it was, it's, well, we planned to have a nice, neat building, so I mean, everything's going to be, it's going to be, basically, it's going to be a cold block. You know, I, I don't know, because I don't operate outside of a, in, in, in a nice, neat building now, or, or something like that, but, uh, but I want to have the right, the proper insulation and everything like that. I'm sure it'll be sound deadening as well, but...
You're sure what, I'm sorry?
I'm sure it'll be sound deadening as well, you know, there's just the, but, but I, I, I don't have the experience to, to know, you know? We don't make a lot of noise, outside hand tools and stuff like that, you know? And we're, we're on four acres there, so it's, it, where, where we're looking to situate it, we're looking to situate more towards the 95 side in respect to, to the development that's on, to, you know, we're looking at property left of us. And also, the, the way the property is shaped, it's kind of, it's shaped like this, you know? There's not a lot we can even really do down in that other area that's towards the, towards the houses, so, so, and even, I don't even know where we can put the building, so...
You can put two buildings on there, and we could still have 500 to 700 feet from, actually from Canache Road, from the road that's there, without a problem. And we're trying to leave all of the trees that we can as, as buffers.
Nice trees, yeah.
Yeah, nice trees, yeah, we got to cut down some nice trees that we don't even want to cut down.
I wanted to see if either Brad or Jim could just quickly comment on if, if the zone change goes through to manufacturing. You guys know district use tables within that, within that manufacturing? What, what's allowed? So, I think that might help Ms. Lorden to, to get a sense of what's allowed, what's not allowed, just an overview on that. District use tables in that manufacturing zone, Brad, if you could come up with just a quick...
I don't have my, copy my zoning ordinance with me, I'm sorry. I didn't think that it was going to be necessary tonight, but, uh, it is a good point that they bring up about the fact that it is going to be zone manufacturing, and no offense, if it is sold to a different, to butter, then anything that is permitted within the manufacturing zone would be allowed to be there. I think, uh, councilperson Capello had the right idea that, and I know you're opposed to it, but some sort of restrictions that maybe limits the operation to interior that also states that any exterior storage actually be screened from view with appropriate fencing. And maybe a restriction on, on the hours of operation to follow the noise ordinance provisions or, or something along that guidelines. But, uh, yes, if it is zone manufacturing, then if it changes hands, it, it could be anything. They probably have to go through development plan review, stuff like that, but they wouldn't need any zoning if it's a permitted use.
All right, thanks, Brad. I didn't know if Jim had any. You know the district use table off the top of your head?
Well, if you want it, it's in the...
Well, I have a copy of the ordinance, yeah, but it's, there's a lot of uses that are allowed.
Oh, yeah. Lots, lots of places.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole column of manufacturing uses in the zoning ordinance, so, you know, without restrictions, any one of them could be practiced there. But that's something that the council's done in the past anyway, is that they've, I believe it was done for Enova initially, where they can only do electric, electric lighting panels. So, you could really narrow this down quite a bit.
We had to change it, though, for Enova ultimately.
That's right.
Because they were unable to do anything with financing.
Exactly, that, and that's the problem. That's the double-edged sword that you're up against, right?
As Mr. Hawkins pointed out.
That's right.
Okay, thanks, guys. Okay. Any more, Mr. Oberg?
Do I have to announce?
Yes, yes, you do, even though I know it.
Rick Oberg, 12 Hopkinton Hill Road. I want to voice the same concern that Mary Jane voiced, is just the manufacturing, no, no ill will towards small businesses and things like that, because I think the town needs more of it. I've sat here and watched the town shoot down drive-throughs and, and pit little things like that. I think we need more of that. I'm just concerned with, like you said, manufacturing opening us up to whoever else buys this property, or you guys, too. I mean, you guys could change your mind and say, oh, I, I want to open up a cement mixing company, and, and you could do that. I'm not saying you would, but you could, now that you've opened yourself up to manufacturing without some sort of restrictions. I mean, we, we live right there, so there's, there's noise and things like that, and no matter how small the acid things are, they're still dangerous. I mean, we watched exactly what happened on 138 by Hope Valley. I got stuck in that traffic where a one-gallon container spilled, somebody, and it opened up, turned into this cloud thing, and they shut down 138 for four, five hours. So, very concerned about that, only because of our proximity to that and, and the wind and things like that. So, we, we just need to make sure that we're protecting ourselves and things like that, not opening up, because we need the small businesses, but we don't need manufacturing. We don't need giant places and things like that. So, I think we need to be a little bit careful about manufacturing.
Thanks, really. Maybe you guys can talk about the spill containment, if you have any, I'm sure you have measures that, inside the building and outside, do you have spill containment?
Uh, I'm open to, to, to suggestion in terms of that. I mean, we, we handle the products all the time, and, uh, it's, uh, you know, what we do is we end up diluting it down, because we don't, we don't use it full strength, you know? That's the thing. We've got a corrosive cabinet in our, in our shop, and in accordance with OSHA and all the, the guidelines that's set forth, but, but, uh, but, yeah, that's, that's really all, all we can do, is just do, do our best and do other jobs efficiently, you know? And if, and if there is an OSHA guideline, I'm sure we'll follow it.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Uh, one other thing, if I can say it, the, that one small piece of land we're talking about, being zoned the way it is, everything around it is zoned manufacturing. And I, I understand, we understand the concern completely about, you know, as far as the noise or whatever else. It's not something that we're looking to, you know, jam down someone's throat or whatever else, we're just looking to see if we can get this approved and have it the way, you know, where it should. And we will try to adhere as to best we can for everything that's there.
Yeah, there are, there are actually more, there are closer manufacturing zones to your, to your home right now, at, at this point in time. Because right across the street is all, it's all manufacturing.
But it's across the street, there's no residential around that. You guys are like a pocket here with residential zones.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I think...
I understand, no, we understand what you're saying, and we, we, we're going to try to work as best we can with the people of the town. Now, you know, that's why we're here. That's where the business comes from. It doesn't come from outside, it comes from goodwill.
I think the council could be, you know, relatively gentle, they're not like you can only do one business, like we did do with Renova. But it's that you would have things buffered, that you may not do, any, any exterior storage would be enclosed, things that are very easy for you to accomplish.
Oh, yeah.
And it is beneficial to the neighbors as well. And I do believe with the insulation, especially if you want those R factors, that really does help with the noise abatement tremendously. Um, I think you'll find that. Also, because you follow OSHA for inside of a manufacturing plant, they would have other spill containment that they do by law. So, I'm sure you would follow all of those rules as well. It is certainly something worth bringing up. But it's within, it's like having an artist's studio with their paints and their solvents, although artists are not very good at following OSHA. However, I am sure that you would.
Yeah, we would, we, we definitely do, and we have to, but I, I have to because I employ people, you know? I, I want to make sure everything's a safe environment for everybody that works here as well.
And your clients to come and visit.
That's right, yeah, exactly.
Mr. President, I, I think the important point here, you got to this, is you have property that's going to be improved. You have property in an area where there's mixed use. So, unless something, a shoe drops, I'd claim to vote for this, but I just think that it's a step forward, you get off exit two, you see that house, and it doesn't really show well to the Hopkinton, you know? So, I think that this should be supported, if you want to put some restrictions, fine, but, uh, I think we should go for it, and we vote, text leading.
Well, I've been dying to tear that house down, so just let me know, okay?
Have you guys, I'm just curious, have you guys secured financing, or are you going to pay, do cash for the, the buildings and...
The land I have paid for. And then we, we haven't even gone after any financing at this point in time. We, you know, it's kind of, we're going to, we want to make sure we had our ducks in order, and so we're trying to get all our ducks in order, and make sure that everybody's happy as opposed to, you know...
It's a good business.
Not doing it the right way.
Yep.
You know? Hopefully, we're doing it the right way, you know? I mean, this is new for us, so we're trying to get in and get it, do it, get it done the right way, so...
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to close the hearing and set a date for the decision.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, any further discussion? Lisa, when do we next...
Your next, our early scheduled meeting is 15.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay?
Is that okay now? All right, let's do that.
Thank you.
And what date is that?
15th.
15th, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, you have the samples?
Oh, yeah.[1611.12] Thank you very much.
Very nice, I can read them. The cement's beautiful, gray one.
Scott, you think yours, you guys look like, like, taking those away?
I looked one of them, and it looked like the ocean with land.
Yeah, it looked like you were up in outer space and down the earth.
Yeah.
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 What was it, eighty dollars a square foot?
That's the basic. And then you start playing with it.
Okay.
Everybody's coming from Block Island and...
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Approve the town council meeting minutes of August 4th, 2014. Town council meeting minutes of August 18th, 2014. Approve refunds submitted by the tax collector.
Mr. President.
Hold on one second. Lisa.
I just wanted to mention to you that Congresswoman first noticed on August 4th, Congress meeting, that we want that, we made the Congress motion in second under consent agenda of missing, so we have Councilor Capello and Councilor Thompson. And Councilor Capello also mentioned on page two of the same meeting minutes on M&amp;L holdings brought line down, that it should state, state it's for neighborhood bucks for property.
Rather than my property.
I move these, consent agenda be approved of those correctly.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Jeez, the first public forum, jeez, I thought, first public forum, anyone out there wishing to be heard? Having heard none. Town Council President Report. This past week, I attended an award ceremony at the Wood River Health Services for Congressman Landevan. He got a Health Advocate Champion Award, and I went there to support the Wood River Health Services. I also wanted to ask him about which Mike, the director, Mike Lichtenstein, and I have talked many times about the need for psychiatric services or increased psychiatric services at the Wood River Health and elsewhere in our, in our south county communities. And they're going to try and put something together. He's got a liaison that works in his office that's going to hopefully get Mike some answers. But out of that meeting, Mike at Wood River Health wanted to give us an update, and he'll do that next meeting about the Wood River Health and some of the things that they've accomplished in a short period of time. So it was a good meeting, and I wish I would have asked him for a ticket to the president's event the next day, but I forgot it was coming, so I didn't feel like spending $10,000, so...
But we can't help you with that.
Yeah. At the low end.
Then we all could go, it'd be a table.
So, but anyway, that's my spiel on the awards ceremony. Next, Bill McGary, Tom Andrews report.
During August, I worked with the planning director, Brian Russell, to consider and evaluate the town proposed extension of its current electricity supply contract under the rand receivance of Thompson and a reprogram REAP. Basically, the league has again designated direct energy as its preferred provider of electricity of both weights. What they do is the General Assembly have given them authorization to, so they didn't have to go out of bid, and what they did is they solicit bids for services, all municipal season dollars. Thirty-four out of thirty-nine season dollars jumped on board, and generally for lower electricity costs for twelve, twenty-four, and thirty-six month periods. Last year, we also locked in with direct energy for three years of lower rate, they were receiving national grid, and consequently saved thousands of dollars. So we're hoping to do the same this year. Their numbers have come out, and national grid prices are not scheduled to be up until some number of percent. It's kind of a work in progress. Looks like we must have...
Thank you for all the work on that grant, or on the electric.